Buenas tardes. Hoy es jueves, 21 de marzo de 2019. El Comité de Derechos de Salud, Salud, Energía y Trabajadores asumirá su orden. Mi nombre es Teresa Mosqueta, presidenta del comité. Escuchamos de nuestra vicepresidenta, Deborah Juárez, que está en camino luchando contra el tráfico. Alguien debió hacer algo al respecto. Estamos trabajando en ello. Y probablemente se nos unirán pronto a la miembro del consejo Bagshaw. Perfecto tiempo. Gracias. La miembro Juárez está en camino, así que nos dijo que estaría un par de minutos tarde. Gracias por acompañarnos hoy. Vamos a empezar con cuatro temas de la agenda. Hay apuntes mayoral al Consejo de Estadounidenses de Estadounidenses de Trabajadores. Hay apuntes mayorales al Panel de Revisión de Ciudad Light. Va a haber un breve anuncio sobre la iniciativa 124. No va a haber ninguna acción política hoy, pero queríamos sumar una comprensión básica de la iniciativa que había pasado previamente y donde estamos ahora. Luego, va a haber una resolución sobre la Comisión de Encomendos Ambientales de Skagit. Y esa es nuestra agenda completa para hoy. Vamos a empezar con el comentario público. Y como siempre, tenemos a Alex Zimmerman con nosotros. Alex, bienvenido al micrófono. Tienes dos minutos, por favor. Y por favor, mantén tus comentarios enfocados en la agenda de hoy.
Gracias, señora. Zihai, mi hermosa, dulce... Mi nombre es Alex Zimmerman. Quiero hablar de algo que es absolutamente interesante. Usted ha nombrado hoy a dos personas para... ...el panel de Ciudad Light. Miembro de la comisión, algo así. Sí. Apuntamiento a un panel de revisión de Ciudad Light. Así que he venido a este encuentro muchas veces antes. Y durante los últimos meses, vengo a cada encuentro. Lo que me hace absolutamente único es exactamente lo que quiero decir. Es sobre la confusión que tenemos. Tenemos dos puntos que son críticos. Primero, mire ahora mismo. Down, es un encuentro. 300 personas. La mayoría son de Ciudad Light. Cada encuentro cuesta aproximadamente $300,000. Ese es mi cálculo. Así que cada año, este encuentro cuesta probablemente $10,000,000 solo desde un departamento. Y hablé de esto varias veces. Diez años he venido, más de 2,000 veces. Y dije, chicos, gastamos aproximadamente... El dormitorio costó cada año $200,000. $10,000,000 solo de desempleo. Es muy importante. Es el número uno. Número dos. Vine a este encuentro y veo cada vez al director Schmidt. Es bueno. Es exactamente lo que te digo. Usted debe tener cada mes un encuentro con cada departamento y cada director debe sentarse y escuchar a la gente. Chicos, lo siento. Te pagamos $200,000, $300,000, $350,000 de salario para el manejo. Este manejo es como todo negocio civilizado. Lo que no hay en el gobierno de Seattle puede sentarse, puede escuchar a la gente, a nuevas ideas. Así que ahora mismo traeré mis dos nuevas ideas. Esta idea cuesta millones y millones de dólares. Así que ahora mismo les digo a todos. Debemos limpiar esta habitación de estos crujidos que no tienen experiencia con los negocios.
Gracias, Alex. La siguiente persona a hablar es Shaisa Damij. Realmente lo siento si pronuncié mal su nombre. Gracias por acompañarnos. Y eso es todo el gente que me ha firmado después de esto. Si están aquí para testificar en el comentario público, por favor, auténtico. Si están aquí para hablar con testimonio, en este momento pueden firmar allá y podemos aumentar la lista de personas que van a hablar. Gracias por permitirme hacer ese PSA en español. Muy brevemente.
No hay problema. Buenas tardes, presidenta Mosqueta y miembro del consejo Bagshaw y cualquier otro miembro del consejo que llegará inmediatamente. Mi nombre es Shaisa Damij con este hotel Nexus ubicado en Distrito 5 en el barrio Norte Gate. Y también soy miembro del Consejo de Asesoramiento de Negocios de la Mayoría Durkan. Pero esta mañana estoy testificando en nombre de la Asociación de Hotel de Seattle en conexión con la discusión o actualización propuesta de la Iniciativa de Salud y Seguridad de los Empleados de los Hoteles, que entiendo que este comité va a considerar adelante. Solo quiero expresar que los hoteles de Seattle están muy preocupados y comprometidos con la salud y la bienestar de nuestros empleados, incluyendo asegurarse de que cada empleado esté seguro en el lugar de trabajo. Y específicamente, apoyamos activamente proporcionar botones de pánico a nuestros empleados. Y eso es solo un componente importante de nuestro compromiso con la seguridad de los empleados, que también incluye políticas, procedimientos y entrenamientos. Y estamos comprometidos en prevenir el harassment sexual y el asalto en el lugar de trabajo. Y nos gustaría pedir que mientras el comité y el consejo de ciudad discuten la iniciativa de salud y seguridad de los empleados de los hoteles, esperamos estar en la mesa especialmente para ayudar a abordar las consecuencias no intencionales en varias provisiones de la ley para asegurar que los resultados ampliamente cumplen las intenciones de la ley y los intereses mejores de los empleados. Así que esperamos ser parte de la solución. Muchas gracias por su tiempo.
Gracias, Shaisa. Realmente genial conocerte y espero verlo en el próximo encuentro del Comité de Asesoramiento de Negocios de la Mayoría. ¡Yay! Bueno. ¿Alguien más quiere hablar en este momento? Bien, eso cerrará nuestro testimonio público por esta mañana. Muchas gracias por eso. En este punto, vamos a pasar al primer tema de negocios y será el apoyo a la Consejera de Trabajadores de los Hoteles. Erin House, bienvenida a clarkearnos por primera vez en el comité de la HU. Encantada de tenerte. ¿Podría leer los temas de la agenda, de 1 a 4?
Tres temas de la agenda: apuntes de Silvia González, Teresa Hillis, Elizabeth Hunter Keller y Lani Todd como miembros del Consejo de Trabajadores de los Hoteles para un anuncio y discusión.
Excelente. ¿Podríamos acompañarnos en la mesa por Karina Bull y Janine Jan del Office de Estándares de Trabajadores? También tendremos a Antonio Ruffin, quien hará interpretación para uno de nuestros apuntes. Si nos puedes unir también. Y también nos gustaría invitar a los apuntes Silvia González, Teresa Hills, Elizabeth Hunter Keller y Lani Todd. Y bienvenidas, miembro Juárez. Realmente genial verte. Estás genial. No, no, lo vimos... Ah, lo siento. Muchas gracias. Así que muchas gracias por acompañarnos. Es genial ver tantas caras de nuevo mientras nos reunimos para hablar sobre los Consejos de Trabajadores de los Hoteles. Y gracias a todos ustedes. Muchos de ustedes fueron muy involucrados en ayudar a crear el Consejo de Trabajadores de los Hoteles... Lo siento, la legislación de los trabajadores de los hoteles, que incluía el Consejo de Estándares. Muy emocionada de ver que la mayor envíe sus nombres para el apuntamiento. Y antes de que nos movamos, si ustedes podrían presentarse para el registro, sería genial. Y empecemos aquí con Lani.
Para el registro, Lani Todd. Gracias.
Hola, soy Elizabeth Hunter Keller.
Teresa Hillis.
Hola, soy Karina Bull. Soy la gerente de políticas del Office de Estándares de Trabajadores.
Soy Janine Jan del Office de Estándares de Trabajadores.
Hola a todos. Mi nombre es Silvia González de Casa Latina, trabajadora de los trabajadores.
Soy Antonio Ruffin. Estoy interpretando para Silvia en el consejo.
Bienvenidas. Antes de empezar, ¿quería ofrecerle palabras de la Oficina de Estándares de Trabajadores?
Bueno, comenzaré más rápido y luego pasaré a Janey, quien ha estado trabajando extraordinariamente duro en unir todo esto. Simplemente diré que estamos muy emocionadas y estamos oficialmente lanzando el Consejo y el proceso público en los próximos dos semanas. Y Janey puede proporcionar más detalles sobre eso.
Sí, así que estamos muy emocionadas de tener las últimas cuatro miembros aquí antes de ustedes. Si todo va bien, tendremos nuestro primer encuentro el lunes. Si algo cambia, por supuesto, reorganizaremos. El proceso de creación de reglas para la ordenanza de los trabajadores de los hoteles comenzará la primera semana de abril, así que tendremos el final programado con suerte en los próximos varios días de negocios. Así que vigile el RCP. Si están interesados en participar en eso, por favor, contacten con nosotros. Y de vuelta, la razón por la que estamos aquí es para saludar a estas hermosas personas. Y te devolveré la mano.
Excelente. Bueno, gracias. Creo que irán en el orden que nos hizo la gente presentarse. Mi vieja amiga y buena amiga, Lani Todd. Ella es de Distrito 2, Directora Legislativa y Directora de Políticas Públicas de SEIU. He tenido la oportunidad de trabajar con ella en un número de políticas relacionadas con los estándares y políticas de salud en los años. Estoy emocionada de que su nombre salga. Sé que tiene experiencias personales con necesidad de cuidado infantil y necesidad de trabajar en plena hora. Y así espero tener esa experiencia en el consejo o en el Consejo. ¿Quería hablar un poco sobre qué te motiva a querer participar en el Consejo de Trabajadores de los Hoteles?
Por supuesto. Gracias, miembro Mosqueta. También es bueno verte de nuevo. Muy emocionada. Creo que las cosas que... Sí, como madre con un bebé, tratando de cuidar en el área, también tengo un fondo en política de cuidado infantil antes de mi posición anterior. Y en mi posición actual, paso mucho tiempo trabajando en temas de cuidado a largo plazo y en cuidado en casa. Y, claro, los miembros que represento están en el ámbito de la Medicaid y tienen una cierta dinámica diferente. Muchos de los problemas que estamos viendo allí pertenecen a los trabajadores aquí en el mundo del cuidado en casa. Y algunos de los problemas en los que estoy muy emocionada trabajando en el Consejo además del mandato actual es pensar en las respuestas a la discriminación y el harassment sexual y cómo podemos abordar algunos de ellos, así como asegurarnos de que el trabajo que la gente se ha firmado es el trabajo que se le pide cuando lleguen. Gracias.
Si está bien con los miembros del comité, creo que vamos a ir por ahí y luego tomar preguntas. Elizabeth Hunter Keller, gracias por acompañarnos de Distrito 6. Veo que usted también es empleador de trabajadores de los hoteles como cuidadora de la casa. Trabaja en U-Dub en la escuela de enfermería. Mi pasión, una publica, advocate de salud pública en plena hora. Por eso hacemos este trabajo. Y querer asegurar dignidad y respeto en el mejor lugar son algunas de las cosas que escuchamos de su anterior solicitud. Cuéntanos un poco más de lo que es interesante para usted servir en este Consejo.
Bueno, en realidad... Así que no estoy trabajando ahora porque tengo un bebé de ocho semanas.
Felicidades.
Y créanlo o no, no se suponía que se preocuparan por nuestro menor solo o al menos con otra persona. Y así es por lo que siento muy fuertemente por los trabajadores de los hoteles. Emplojo tanto a la casa como a la cuidadora. Son como familia. Y la oportunidad que veo en este Consejo es proveer mejor para ellos y ayudar a otras mujeres a entender, como yo, que son empleadores y que tienen una responsabilidad de las personas que emplean. Cosas como beneficios portables, asegurarse de que solo están allí para hacer el trabajo y están pagados por lo que están haciendo. Muchas historias sobre trabajadores de los hoteles que terminan haciendo mucho más que lo que están pagados. Además, pienso en estas mujeres como si fueran mi familia y querría cuidarlas como yo lo haría con mi propia.
Gracias. Muchas gracias. Y Teresa Hills, de Distrito 2, creo. Gracias por su trabajo continuo con nosotros para ayudar a dugar en los detalles de la política mientras creamos esta política, especialmente desde la perspectiva del empleador. Miembro de Moms Rising, entiendo. Espero saber más sobre lo que está interesado en hacer en este Consejo.
Sí, absolutamente. Gracias por invitarme. Fui parte del grupo de los interesados que ayudó a crear la ordenanza el verano pasado y estaba muy emocionada de ser parte de eso y emocionada de potencialmente unirse como miembro del Consejo. Soy una madre trabajadora de dos hijos, así que tengo un hijo de cinco años y un hijo de dos años en casa. Y durante los últimos seis años, hemos empleado varias cuidadoras de tiempo parcial y numerosos bebesitores. Actualmente tenemos a Isabella, una de las que vive con nosotros de O'Perre, que es de Brasil. Y también empleo a una cuidadora de tiempo parcial que conocí a través de Casa Latina, Maria Duarte. Y realmente creo que la gente como Maria y nuestras cimas merecen tener acceso a muchos beneficios que actualmente no tienen acceso y especialmente la libertad de despliegue en el trabajo, acceso a un salario vivo y acceso a beneficios como la fija de vacaciones y la retirada. Y así es lo que me motiva a estar aquí. Espero trabajar junto a otros para abordar el desafío de alcanzar más de 30,000 hogares en Seattle. Y creo que muchos, si no la mayoría, se preocupan profundamente por aquellos que trabajan en sus hogares. Y es solo una cuestión de sortear esto y asegurarse de que la gente pueda acceder a la información que necesita para ayudar a aquellos que trabajan en sus hogares.
Gracias mucho. Y Silvia, bienvenidas. Gracias por estar aquí con nosotros de nuevo. Silvia, muchas gracias por estar aquí con nosotros una vez más. Y gracias por su apoyo durante el año pasado. Muchas gracias por su ayuda y asistencia en el año pasado, durante el año mientras creamos la política. ¿Por qué está interesada en servir en esta posición? ¿Por qué está interesada en servir en esta posición?
Buena pregunta. Gracias. Primero que nada, soy trabajadora de la casa desde el 2003.
Buena pregunta. Gracias. Primero que nada, he estado trabajando como trabajador de los hoteles desde 2003.
En el cual fui víctima de robo de salario. Me pagaban $50 por trabajar todo el día. Por eso tuve interés. Pero también estoy muy interesada en esta posición porque muchos de mis compañeros que están ahí, que decidieron acompañarme el día de hoy, muchos son probablemente víctimas también allá afuera. Que ojalá todos los trabajadores fueran como Liz, todos los empleadores fueran como Liz o como muchos de los que están aquí. Pero no. Allá afuera es diferente.
En ese momento, ella fue víctima de robo de salario. Y ella siente que muchos de sus colegas que están aquí hoy también probablemente han tenido experiencia de robo de salario. Desafortunadamente, no todos los empleadores son tan buenos como Liz y algunos de los otros que están aquí presentes.
Y estoy aquí porque no nada más. Me gustaría esos cinco puntos que están en la carta de derechos. Si no queremos más y que se implementen esos cuatro puntos principales.
Está esperando tener los cinco puntos principales de la Ley de Derechos de los Trabajadores implementados, al menos los cuatro más importantes y un número de otros puntos importantes también.
Y la carta de derechos habla que también los jardineros y los cocineros están incluidos en esto y me gustaría mucho que parte de mis compañeros de Casa Latina que son jardineros estén interesados y se incluyan más a esta carta de derechos.
Y está esperando tener otras habilidades como trabajadores de yardo o trabajadores de paisaje, así como cocinas y otras personas que hacen trabajo similar también sea cubierta por este tipo de legislación o regulaciones.
Por mí y por todos ellos, por eso estoy aquí.
Estoy aquí en mi nombre y especialmente de su.
Muy bien. Gracias. Muchas gracias. Muy bien. Ustedes son muy impresionantes. Quiero venir a sentarme en este Consejo con ustedes mientras hablen de los detalles de la política y estrategias de implementación, difusión y educación. Va a ser realmente crítico. Así que una cosa que solo quiero señalar para la gente y creo que esto es algo que deberíamos ser muy orgullosos de. Cuando estaba en DC la semana pasada, tuve la oportunidad de reunirme con la Congressa Giaiapal, quien está co-sponsorizando la Ley de Derechos de los Trabajadores de los Hoteles Nacional. Y nos reunimos con los gente del Alianza Nacional de Trabajadores de los Hoteles que nos habían dicho que realmente estaban tomando nuestra legislación y que la están poniendo en política federal. Y van a hacer cosas que no fuimos capaces de hacer, con suerte, relacionadas con la insuración de la desempleo, salud, retirada y algunas políticas de fija de salario. Estos son realmente temas que creo que en el nivel estatal nos encantaría ver, pero si el nivel federal puede hacerlo, eso es genial. Y ustedes van a ayudarnos a averiguar si hay una solución a nivel municipal también. Así que estoy increíblemente orgullosa de que este trabajo no solo ha inspirado a otras ciudades, pero con suerte se aplicará en nuestro nivel nacional. Quiero dejar a la gente saber que no vamos a votar hoy. Lo que haríamos en cambio es votar el 25 de marzo debido al tiempo de introducción y calendario de referencia. Pero queremos asegurarnos de que todas tus preguntas se respondan aquí hoy para que mientras pasemos el lunes, estemos completamente seguras de expresar nuestro apoyo para los candidatos y abrirlo a nuestros colegas para hacer preguntas.
Me gustaría empezar con algunos de ustedes que trabajan en el cuidado infantil y lo que ven que la ciudad puede hacer para ayudar a apoyar financieramente a las familias que están contratando trabajadores de los hoteles. La ciudad y el estado, claramente. Mi experiencia es ahora doce años en este campo, pero tuve a mi padre, que vivía con nosotros. contratamos ayuda de los trabajadores para venir y pagamos, creo que incluso en ese momento, unos $20 por hora. Fuimos afortunados porque pudimos hacer eso. Pero sé que muchas otras familias... Eso es un grosso giro. Y además del pago anual que pagábamos, creo que era el impuesto de la desempleo y al Departamento de Trabajo por otro requisito. Y fue bastante sorprendente cuán difícil fue incluso para la gente que son dos abogados en la familia encontrar qué es lo que tienes que pagar, qué es lo que tienes que registrar, quién paga y cuándo. Así que me gustaría escuchar un poco más de su pensamiento en la arena del cuidado infantil y luego como Consejo global, ¿qué podemos hacer para simplificar eso para que la gente tenga una lista de comprobadas de lo que se le va a requerir de pagar? Y luego, ¿hay formas en las que podamos encontrar algún apoyo adicional?
Buena suerte.
Lo sé. Bueno, primero que todo, diría que no soy experta en esto en absoluto. Quiero decir, lo que creo que es parte del desafío que vamos a enfrentar es que muchas personas en la casa ni siquiera se consideran empleadores que tienen a alguien trabajando, ya sabes, diez o doce horas por semana o una cuidadora de la casa que viene dos días al mes. Pero estoy de acuerdo contigo. Mis amigos y colegas y yo estamos enfrentando el desafío ahora mismo de tratar de averiguar cómo poder permitir el cuidado infantil en esta atmósfera actual. Y esa es parte de la razón por la que tengo a una de las que vive con nosotros ahora. Adoramos tenerla allí, pero la mayor razón por la que la elegimos es porque fue la solución más económica para nosotros. Y también fue fácilmente hecho por una agencia que descartó todo el detalle de cómo pasamos por el proceso. Y eso podría ser un ejemplo para nosotros de cómo podríamos utilizar algunas de las formas en las que esos arenas de cuidado infantil más formal que han tenido lugar en el nivel federal han hecho algo que es simple para que la gente participe. Pero creo que es ciertamente un desafío para nosotros y uno que estoy emocionada de enfrentar. Cuando tienes 30,000 hogares individuales que todos están haciendo algo diferente, necesita mucho trabajo reunir algo que sea simple lo suficiente y fácil lo suficiente para que puedan utilizarlo y también convenciente para que la gente quiera participar y voluntariamente unirse para que podamos tener una corriente. Pero creo que hay formas de hacer eso. Hay muchas comunidades online en este momento en las que la gente está muy activa. No sé si ustedes dos participan en muchas de ellas, pero es una forma en la que la gente encuentra el cuidado infantil. Es una forma en la que la gente comparte que están interesados en participar en este sistema. Y creo que hay formas de utilizar algunos de esos también para poder hacer esto efectivamente.
Estoy feliz de hablar a un nivel más universal que creo que el mundo del cuidado, ya sea el mundo de cuidado a largo plazo o el mundo del cuidado infantil, han venido de una cierta cantidad de discriminación sistémica basada en el hecho de que son mujeres haciendo el trabajo y que durante los últimos 50 años, las mujeres han estado dispuestas a hacer el trabajo sin importar el salario debido a la naturaleza discriminatoria del sistema. Y así lo que tenemos es un sistema donde tienes a los trabajadores no siendo capaces de hacer y tienes a los consumidores no siendo capaces de pagar por ello. Y es porque hemos tratado lo que potencialmente es una utilidad gubernamental, es decir, la escuela, como una entidad privada de mercado y financiada de manera adecuada. Y así creo que hay mucho que podemos hacer en el nivel municipal, pero creo que tenemos que reconocer que el mundo del cuidado es una utilidad y es algo que acompaña a una fuerte comunidad y empieza a invertir en ello en los niveles estatales y federales adecuadamente.
Así que me encantaría hablar más contigo. Una de las cosas que el miembro Mosqueta y yo estamos trabajando, por supuesto, es tratar de conseguir una instalación de cuidado infantil aquí en Ciudad Hall. Así que nos encantaría tener su experiencia advirtiendo sobre lo que ha aprendido, lo que sabe, qué requisitos... Y sabemos que los requisitos están cambiando. Pero creo que, Lani, hemos llamado a SEIU. Estamos tratando de programar algún tiempo y espero que participen.
Y ese es el SEIU 925. Estoy feliz de ser un asesor en eso y asegurarme de tener las conexiones correctas.
Genial. Gracias.
Muchas gracias por esos respuestas. Miembro Juárez, ¿algún comentario?
Solo tenía más preguntas procedenciales, señora presidenta. Así que este es un Consejo de nueve miembros. Y hemos llenado ocho ya. Tendremos cuatro mayores, cuatro consejos de ciudad, y luego el Consejo mismo elegirá uno. ¿Son todas mujeres?
Justo estaba escribiendo eso. Hablando de mujeres haciendo el trabajo.
Sí, solo estaba diciendo por...
Estoy realmente mirando a ustedes para ver si tienen una lista de trabajo también.
Sí, hay una... Elijah es...
Oh, Elijah.
Elijah. Oh, está bien.
Sí. Creo que es un punto bien tomado porque cuando hablamos de deshacerse de la racismo institucional o el sexismo, a menudo también hablamos de cómo aquellos que han sido opresos no deberían ser los responsables por hacer las correcciones y siempre hablando. También hablamos de asegurar que aquellos que han sido directamente afectados por la política o en acción deberían estar en la mesa para crear esas soluciones de políticas. Así que creo que estás levantando un punto realmente importante. Queremos tener aquellos que tengan el mayor conocimiento y la mayor experiencia en la mesa, lo que creo que es lo que todos ustedes representan. Y también creo que es crucial que no simplemente asumamos que esto es una cosa adicional que podemos esperar a que nuestros amigos sepan porque ya han dicho que tienen tres o cuatro trabajos de tiempo parcial completos en el trabajo que hacen diariamente. Gran punto.
El otro punto que quería levantar, y espero trabajar con ustedes, es que el miembro Bagshaw mencionó un tema. Estoy más interesada en... Bueno, estoy interesada en todos los temas, pero una cosa que voy a estar esperando para tu guía será sobre el retención de los trabajadores, seguridad de los trabajadores, robo de salario y algunas de las preguntas que levantamos cuando estuvimos poniendo el comité juntos, que en realidad vamos a dar mucho a ustedes. Porque no hicimos lo que ustedes hacen. Y así entiendo la parte del cuidado, pero también voy a profundizar en los trabajadores de los hoteles y los trabajadores dentro de los hoteles. Estoy muy preocupada por eso y la legislación reciente y los escuches de juicio y opiniones recientes. Y realmente quiero que sea un esfuerzo colaborativo en el que trabajamos con la industria y trabajamos con ustedes sobre cómo abordar eso. Así que en realidad pasamos la legislación que sostiene la scrutiny legal y no solo, ante todo, protege a nuestros trabajadores, pero, segundo, respeta y promueve el negocio en sí. Porque estoy interesada en escuchar ambos lados y tener algo que en realidad es ley buena, que es justa y equitativa, tiene proceso de dueño y, como dije, no solo sostiene la scrutiny legal, sino donde podemos estar, Seattle puede estar, nuevamente, cortando el borde y en realidad pasando una ley que es correcta. Y eso es lo que quiero hacer. Es un poco cansativo cuando a veces pasamos leyes, pero es nuestro trabajo. Pero cuando obtenemos otra oportunidad, como diríamos, otro palo en la almohada, quiero hacerlo bien. Así que eso es lo que estoy esperando.
También añadiría que trabajar juntos es importante en ese lado y porque sé que muchos de los cuidadores de la casa que trabajan en nuestros hogares también trabajan en hoteles. Es como, ya sabes, los días en los que no están en nuestros hogares, están en hoteles. Hay una gran overlap.
Y usted mencionando eso, nuevamente, solo trae a esa overlap. Eso es algo que no habría pensado de inmediato. Estaba más enfocado en hoteles. Pero tienes razón. Trabajan en hogares, trabajan en centros de ancianos, trabajan en instalaciones que tienen niños, hogares de grupo. Y así, ya sabes, esas son las categorías en las que vamos a buscar su experiencia en cómo creamos esta nueva ley que esperamos llevar a cabo.
Gracias, Silvia.
Gracias por traer ese punto a la mesa. Es muy importante para las trabajadoras de la casa ya que OSHA, OCUPATIONAL HEALTH AND SAFE ADMINISTRATION, no tiene considerada a las trabajadoras de la casa dentro de sus protecciones. La mayoría de sus enfoques están en el área de la construcción. Entonces, como estamos fuera, no hay muchas protecciones para nosotros y todos esos productos químicos nos hacen tanto daño tanto externo como interno de nuestro cuerpo. Entonces, ¿cómo encontrar una manera que esta agencia sea un poco más enfocada al área doméstico, al área de las trabajadoras de la casa, incluso a los jardineros que trabajan en los jardines con tantos pesticidas? Es muy importante.
Así que gracias por traer esta importante pregunta. Silvia está señalando que OSHA en el nivel federal no cubre realmente a los trabajadores de los hoteles. Su énfasis ha sido históricamente en el trabajo de construcción. Y los trabajadores de los hoteles son rutinariamente expuestos a productos químicos peligrosos que tienen un impacto negativo en la salud. Así que ella querría ver cómo esta agencia enfoca más y más generalmente la legislación enfoca más en la seguridad de los trabajadores de los hoteles y que eso también extienda a los trabajadores de paisaje que también están igualmente expuestos a productos químicos peligrosos.
Excelente. ¿Algún otro comentario de nuestros colegas? Muchas gracias. Gracias por traer ese punto. Se enmarcará bien con un tema más tarde en nuestra agenda, así como si pensamos específicamente sobre los estándares de la industria para los hoteles. about industry standards for hotels. I love that you brought up as well that the individuals we're talking about are also, you know, maybe supplementing income because we still have a lot to do to raise the wages in senior centers and hotels and things like that so that, you know, folks having a good living wage job. We want the work of domestic work to be full-time work that's good living wage as well. And I think that your example of the au pair, that's definitely full-time work. So thank you so much for your interest in serving on this committee, for your past work to make this bill possible. And while we're not taking a formal vote today, your names are going to be on the agenda on Monday, the 25th, at 2:00 p.m. We'll take a final vote there. And it sounds like you have a meeting coming up on Monday. If you could also transmit to us, if we haven't yet seen it, the full list of when the committee meetings are coming up, maybe we'd like to come and, you know, check in with folks and say hello and just thank you again for your work. So with that, mil gracias por su tiempo, gracias por su tiempo. Thank you so much for your time, and we will talk about you on Monday. Thank you all. So let's move into our second item of business. Erin, if you could read into the agenda items five and six, and we will get started with our Seattle City Light review panel.
Agenda items five and six, appointments of Mikel Hanson and Chris Mefford as members of the City Light review panel for briefing and discussion.
Thank you so much. Could we please be joined at the table by our friends from Seattle City Light? Leah Brekka and anybody else coming up with you today? Okay, welcome, please. Yes, Deborah Smith, we'd love to have you. Thank you so much for joining us. We understand that the two City Light, oh my goodness, check this out. Deborah? We're gonna need to wear one of these.
Snowfighters. Well done, Seattle City Light.
Snowfighters. Excellent. Thank you. And I should note, it says, "Snowfighters" for our viewing audience at home. Seattle City Light, thanks to your incredible team for all the work you did, especially in the Seattle freeze, to keep the lights on and turn the lights back on for folks. In Councilmember Bagshaw's committee, unselected committee that she's sharing on Friday, we're going to have a report back as well on the response during the storm, z, plural, because they lasted for more than two weeks. And, you know, want to just highlight that it's not just the folks who are doing the navigation work, but it was also your incredible team that was out there. So thank you for bringing these hats.
And it was interesting, I know you all got the outage report because Councilmember Bagshaw responded on that, and I think we had some conversation about it. But anyway, if you read that, you saw that it was kind of extraordinary, the number of minutes that were excluded in calculating the outage information because of the storm. So very, you know, and that it happened over a number of days. So it wasn't just a one-and-done deal, it was three days, I think. So anyway, very interesting.
Thank you for that. Why don't we, oh, go ahead. I know, right? I gotta.
Hat hair.
Why don't we have you guys introduce yourselves for the record, and then we'll go ahead and get started in.
Lee Brekka, City Light.
Deborah Smith, Seattle City Light.
Excellent. And so today, we are moving forward on two long-awaited appointments, and I know you're waiting for one more from us. We want to make sure that our volunteers at the City Light review board get a chance, sorry, review panel, get a chance to have a full team. And today, we're talking about Mikel.
Michael Hanson.
Michael Hanson.
And Chris Mefford.
And Chris Mefford, both from District Six. And since they are not able to make it today, we do, we usually like to have our first time appointees be present. However, given that these positions have been vacant for a while and you guys highly recommended them, it'd be great to hear a little bit more from your perspective on their qualifications. And we will take your word as their word, as if they were here, and look forward to hearing more about their activities.
Both candidates regret that they were unable to attend. They weren't, they had pre-planned business trips, so, but I do have, they each submitted a letter of interest to participate on the panel. And I have little excerpts from those letters that I can share with you. And those have been shared with your staff. Chris Mefford is a nominee for position one, which is the economist position. Chris is an independent partner in economic development to cities, counties, governments, and businesses. As a consultant, he serves all clients with economic and fiscal impact analyses, facilitation, and strategic planning leadership for communities and economic development. Over the course of his nearly 25-year career in Seattle, he has worked with elected officials and leaders to some of the region's most transformative businesses. He strives to provide an objective, transparent, and balanced viewpoint that services the region's economic, social, and environmental needs and interests. He's committed to bringing the same critical and supportive considerations to support decision-making for Seattle City Light and the region's energy resources.
Okay. Chris?
Thank you.
Michael Hanson is a nominee for position five, which is our commercial customer representative. Mike is the chief operating officer for Sabi Corporation, which is a longtime Puget Sound family-owned and operated business with a long history of community engagement. Sabi has a wide range of businesses in the Seattle City Light service territory, including the development and operation of data centers, medical office spaces, warehouses, and general office space. In his role, Mike manages more than four million square feet of commercial and data center properties. Primarily, those properties are primarily in our franchise city territory of Taquilla. Over his past 15-plus years, Mike has been actively involved with City Light, with our management, and has participated in numerous strategic planning and rate design sessions. Mike is looking forward to using his background and interest in City Light to be a productive, engaged, engaged participant in fulfilling the review panel's mission.
Excellent. Thank you. And if both of these individuals are confirmed on Monday, the 25th of March, will they be able to join the review panel right away?
Yes, they're invited to our next meeting, which is the 26th Tuesday.
Perfect. Okay, great. Questions?
I have only one comment. I don't know Mr. Hanson, but I have worked with Chris Mefford for many years, and he is an excellent candidate. I'm delighted that he's willing to do this. His involvement has been with Puget Sound Regional Council for years, and I'm most impressed that he's willing to do this, so.
Excellent.
And I don't know Chris, but I know Mike, and he's a great guy. And so I think he'll, I think they'll both be, from what I understand, I think they'll both be great contributors to the group.
Yeah, excellent. Any other questions? Okay. The last thing I want to say is thank you. I understand that the review panel has done intense work over the last year, six months to eight months especially. But it does sound like you guys are on track to submit the April 1st report, which is in just about 10 days, so thank you for that. Any other comments on the work that's coming up next for the review panel, once that piece is completed?
Well, I would say that we're already overlapping. For instance, we did have a meeting, some of us met yesterday. We're working on a pilot project. We're working with the energy project to look at a potential pilot for the limited income underserved population. And so we're already really working on the next piece, which is the strategic initiative around rate design and what kinds of pilots we could experiment with between now and then. And so I think partnering with folks in the community who've had a lot of success and they've looked at models that are already in place with Avista and others, we're looking at a percentage of income program, so a PIP. Anyway, I think it's exciting, and we're going to be putting together a group for that piece that will include stakeholders and community members so that we can make sure we design something that's really responsive to that community. So, yeah, I would just say we're already moving ahead on the next piece, and so we're excited to get the policy piece in place so that we can go full steam ahead.
Excellent. Well, one more time, thank you to your team and then also to the review panel members. Thanks to Mr. Hanson and Mr. Medford for serving on this panel. And we will be following up with one more additional appointment for you to complete the review panel. Again, we're not going to take a vote formally today, but you can rest assured that these names will be on the agenda for Monday, March 25th, at 2:00 p.m. for the full council's consideration. Thank you for all your work. Yes.
Yes, thank you.
For the hat.
Did everybody get one? Everybody who was working in the snow? Lovely.
We actually had some appreciation events. We had appreciation events yesterday for, yesterday and the day before, for our crews, one at the cell service center and one at the north service center. And so they got hats. So it was really nice. And burritos. They were delicious.
What else would you want? Thank you so much. Erin, why don't you go ahead and read in item number seven into the agenda? And thank you so much, Dan, for joining us at the table. Dan Elder has, Eater. I don't know why I was putting an L in there. Dan Eater has provided us with a memo as well for the committee staff, or for the committee members, if you haven't yet had a chance to look at it. And for the viewing audience, we're putting it on the screen for you as well. Erin, why don't you go ahead and read in item number seven, please?
And agenda item seven, background and status of Initiative 124 related to protections of hotel workers for briefing and discussion.
Thank you again, Mr. Eater, for joining us. We know that Councilmember Juarez teed up the conversation on this. There's a lot of interest in this discussion. Many of us are well aware, but I just want to reiterate for the viewing public that in 2016, the Seattle voters overwhelmingly passed Initiative 124 by 77%. This extended on-the-job protections for hotel workers. But it isn't exactly widely known that the protections included, that were included in Initiative 124 are not currently in effect due to legal challenges. This leaves a really vulnerable population that, you know, is similar to the population we talked about this morning, out without these protections for right now. So I'm really interested in engaging with this full council and specifically through this committee, a number of our colleagues. For example, Councilmember Gonzalez and Councilmember Herbl, they're also very interested in this topic, who may be joining us for future discussions. We're interested in making sure that we have a cooperative conversation, engagement with the mayor's office, with Councilmember colleagues, with the folks that you heard from the hotel industry, and with hotel workers to evaluate what it will take to put into place common-sense protections that 124 had envisioned. And I think this approach is consistent with the clear intent of Seattle's voters. The first step is for the committee to have a baseline understanding of what Initiative 124 includes, what the current status is of the pending legal challenges. And we've really appreciated working with Dan in the past. Thank you for providing us with this comprehensive memo to walk us through the initiative. And in upcoming meetings, I just want to flag for our council colleagues, we expect to dive into deeper discussions about policy details and potentially what the city could do, can do, and will do with partnership with folks in the community to address the current situation. So today, again, is just a baseline understanding. We'll probably repeat some of these baseline understandings going forward for our council colleagues who couldn't be here with us today, but seemed like a great opportunity to sort of level the playing field and set the stage for what's to come. Go ahead, Ms. Eater.
Thank you, Chair Muscata, councilmembers. As the chair mentioned, Initiative 124 provided protections for Seattle's hotel workers. I'm going to spend a few minutes walking through a central staff memo that is attached to your agenda. The memo describes the current status of the initiative, and it also summarizes the initiative's key provisions. So first, in terms of current status, at a high summary level, the initiative was approved, as the chair mentioned, by Seattle voters on November 6th, 2016, but it is currently not in effect. The city attorney's office is defending the initiative in both state and the federal court system. At the state level, an association of hotel owners challenged the validity of the initiative on multiple grounds. King County Superior Court initially sided with the city, but subsequently, the Court of Appeals agreed with hotel owners that the initiative violated the requirement that a valid initiative may only address one subject. The city has filed a petition for review that is currently pending at the state Supreme Court, but in the meantime, the law is not in effect. At the federal level, there's a separate federal district court challenge that is currently on hold, pending a decision at the state Supreme Court about whether review the case and if so, what the ruling will be. If the Supreme Court doesn't take up the case or takes up the case and determines, sides with the Court of Appeals' ruling, then the initiative is effectively invalidated, and there's no need for the federal court case to proceed.
Can I ask a question, Dan? And this may be something you want to just punt back to the Law Department, but I know that we're all very aware of multiple subjects in an initiative. So what, what did the court, the appeals court find was a problem? Because I thought it was one subject, domestic workers, and, I'm sorry, the hotel workers, and making sure that they were protected. Where did the multiple subjects come in?
I am not, I'm not really in the best position to give you the summary of the lawsuit specifics, but, you know, any initiative is necessarily going to have more than literally one section that it deals with. There's definitions, and there's enforcement, you know, of the main provisions. Then there are the substantive parts, and the Court of Appeals made a decision that the substantive parts exceeded the scope of the single-subject rule. I can't tell you chapter and verse about why they came to that conclusion, but it is the subject of a pending petition for a Supreme Court review, and we hope that that decision will be overturned.
I was going to add that Councilmember Bagshaw, I had an opportunity to read the Court of Appeals' decision and the city's brief to the Washington State Supreme Court. So you're right, it is much more sophisticated. I learn more than I need to know about the one-subject rule, log-rolling and writing. But it did take apart all seven parts, and I think some of the most troublesome part was probably part one on the hotel guest registry and due process issues. But all that aside, I did have a chance to read the city attorney's brief to the Washington State Supreme Court, and of course, they are going to be appealing this. But the reason why I'm saying all this is not because I want to show that I'm smart, but.
You are smart. Maybe you read the cases.
It's mainly because, and I have this for you, Councilmember, and I think I already gave you this, Councilmember. And the only reason why I put that together is because I really am interested, just like Councilmember Muscata and Councilmember Gonzalez, is that this issue has been now in three different courtrooms since 2016. So it's been reviewed, it's been, it got passed, it went to the state superior court, it went to Court of Appeals, it went to Washington State Supreme Court, then it went back to the Court of Appeals. And so when you look at the two opinions, just, this is just my opinion, I think that there's a way that we can really craft a phenomenal law that addresses the deficiencies that were called out in the Court of Appeals, that addresses and highlights some of the great arguments that the city made. And that's why I think it's more than just illustrative. It's the law. And it's good when you read a court's case, I think the Court of Appeals case is only like 20 pages or something, but my point is, they're very systematic, taking apart all sections, but also talking about why all seven parts don't necessarily work together. Now, whether I agree with that, that's a different issue. But the city's brief is very straightforward as well and addresses those issues. So there is a way for us to remedy the single-subject rule. I think there is a way to discuss the other six parts and work with our domestic workers and the people that were at the table here today and with the chairwoman, and also to have our industry folks at the table. Having the hotel people there to explain to us how they can have a safe button, how they can work with chemicals, how the industry actually works on the floor with the 5,000 square feet, all of those issues we can solve if we just sit around the table and work through them. So that's what I'm hoping we can do.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Juarez, and thank you for your research as well and the memo that you provided. I know that, Dan, you have about a 10-minute window here, so I'm going to ask that you go ahead and walk us through your memo. And I also want to flag for the committee, we have talked to the legal team in the Law Department who are happy to come meet with us, and I think we'll be scheduling something for our committee or as our council as a whole soon. But thank you for that, and go ahead and walk us through the details here.
Okay, great.
Welcome, Councilmember Herbl. And you have the.
So I'm going to briefly address the main parts of the agenda, sorry, of the legislation initiative. All of the provisions of the initiative apply to workers in hotels with more than 60 guest rooms. There are some provisions that apply only to so-called large hotels, and those are defined as hotels that have 100 or more than 100 guest rooms. So part one protects hotel employees from being attacked while working alone in guest rooms. As Councilmember mentioned, that one of the provisions has to do with panic buttons, so safe buttons. Hotels are required to provide each worker who enters a guest room unaccompanied with a so-called panic button, allowing the employee to alert other staff when they need immediate aid. Hotels are also required to post signs in guest rooms, alerting guests that employees are equipped with these panic buttons. This part also includes a provision that I describe as a list of accused guests. Hotels are required to maintain a list of all guests who have been accused of any act of violence against an employee of the hotel within a five-year period. Hotels must ban guests from the hotel for three years from the date of any allegation of assault, sexual assault, or sexual harassment that is accompanied either by a sworn statement or corroborating evidence. During the fourth and fifth years after the initial allegation, hotels are no longer required to ban a guest who remains on the list, but hotels are required to alert employees who are assigned to work alone in such a guest's room. There are some circumstances in which a guest may be accused of an act of violence but not be immediately required to check out of the hotel. In such a circumstance, the hotel must either, I'm sorry, the hotel must reassign the employee who made the accusation to work on another floor, or if there isn't another floor in the hotel in another area, for the duration of the accused guest's stay. And the last provision in this part is paid time off. In the event that a hotel worker reports an act of violence, the hotel must pay that employee at the employee's regular rate of pay for the time spent filing a police report and consulting with a counselor of the employee's choosing. The second part protects workers The second part protects workers from on-the-job injuries. The initiative requires hotels to use reasonable safety practices and to control chemical hazards. The initiative also limits how large hotels, again, these are hotels with more than 100 guest rooms, how these large hotels can assign housekeeping work. Specifically, no housekeeper can be required to clean more than 5,000 square feet during a single eight-hour shift. Large hotels must pay time and a half for the entire shift in the event that a hotel, sorry, a housekeeper voluntarily accepts an assignment of more than 5,000 square feet during a single shift. Part 3 is intended to improve access to affordable health care.
Before we go on...
Yes.
Councilmember Mascada, I know that we had some people in the hotel industry today. What I'm really interested in is, is it possible, and from an economic standpoint as well, to assign two workers per room? So there's a 5,000 limitation of square feet to clean during an eight-hour shift. I mean, any of us who clean houses know that two people can make a bed way faster than one person can make a bed. And the same thing is true if you split up the work. What I, you know, we were, we work really hard for, like our firefighters, as an example, to make sure that they have multiple people doing whatever they need to do to respond. I would really like to see some sort of an economic analysis about why you couldn't and shouldn't have two people going into a room, particularly if there's someone there, you know? That I'm, I have not seen studies on this. I would really be interested in it.
Yeah, I know that that's something that was explored during the rulemaking, so the Office of Labor Standards issued rules that went into effect in July 1, I believe, of 2018. Those rules are also on hold, pending the outcome of the litigation. But I know that that was one of the things that they grappled with, and that the hotel owners have also explored and sought clarification on what happens if there are more than one house cleaner assigned to a room. Does that, how does the 5,000-square-feet rule apply? Does it get split between the two? Is it, is there no discretion where each person also is, you know, assumed to be working on 5,000 square feet even with assistance?
Well, for those who have done this work, I'll be interested to get more, I mean, it just strikes me as something that seems like a simple fix, and I'm sure that there's economic reasons why not, but, you know, I really question that.
Again, Part 3 is about access to affordable health care. This applies only to the large hotel employers. Large hotel employers are required to provide additional compensation to low-wage workers, which is defined in the initiative as those living in households with incomes below 40, sorry, 400% of the federal poverty line. There is a formula for determining the amount of the additional compensation that's described in the memo, but I'd summarize it by saying that it's intended to ensure that low-wage workers can afford a gold-level health plan. Large hotel employers are not required to provide such additional compensation in the event that they directly provide a qualifying employer-sponsored health plan.
If folks have questions about gold, silver, platinum, and bronze, I can help answer those, too. Too much information about that, man.
Part 4 protects the jobs of workers when hotel ownership changes hands. The initiative provides that a new hotel owner must offer jobs to the existing workers at the hotel before replacing them with new staff unless the new owner either employs overall fewer workers or discharges one or more existing employees for cause. The last section that I'll address is enforcement. The initiative provides hotel employees with a private right of action to bring suit against their employer in the event that they allege that there has been action that is not in keeping with the initiative provisions. This is unlike, or something that is unlike other city labor laws, for instance, minimum wage, secure scheduling, and others. The city does not have a direct role in enforcing most of the protections of Initiative 124. The Office of Labor Standards can investigate and enforce allegations of wage theft under separate municipal law, but the city cannot directly enforce instances when a hotel does not live up to other requirements of Initiative 124. As an example, if they didn't, if a hotel did not provide required panic buttons, that would be something which the city has the ability to investigate but not to enforce or take action, to rectify.
Can I ask you a quick question? We're still on 5. I thought that the city or the state already addressed that hotels cannot ask workers about their citizenship or immigration status. I thought we dealt with that with Motel 6, or Hotel 8, or whatever they're called, when they were doing that. I thought we addressed it on the state level.
I am not aware of that, but I can...
Let's follow up on that.
They'd be happy to follow up on that.
Because, you know, there's seven parts here, and some of them you can wheedle down and some of them you cannot, but some of this stuff is solid, and we can find it in state law. I think the issue on the single-issue rule is where it got hung up in the hotel registry, but some of these, standing alone are good law. It's the combination of all seven that hurt us. I'm not going to say, "I told you so," but I did say so, but I'm just going to leave it at that. So did you, but I'm just going to leave it at that.
Parts 5 and, I'm sorry, Parts 6 and 7 are, I would say, a series of technical provisions that have definitions and some miscellaneous provisions like severability, and I'm not going to walk through the details unless there are any questions on those.
May I?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbl.
Thank you. Questions about the enforcement and the rulemaking that the Office of Labor Standards has done? The rulemaking that they've done thus far, is it only related to their ability to investigate wage theft under this ordinance? Or is it, have they made rules about other parts of the ordinance? And if they've made rules about the other parts of the ordinance, I have a little difficulty understanding the legal framework for that, because it's my understanding the rules are about a department's administration and enforcement of a law, and if they're not administering or enforcing it, I'm not quite sure why they would need to make rules about it.
General, well, Janaye Johns from the Office of Labor Standards is in the audience, and if she is willing to come up and answer that question, she can answer it directly. I think generally, the rulemaking is intended to provide some clarification of what the city understands to be how to, how to apply the law. And it is a little bit unusual that we are not in an enforcement role for this particular law, but I still think the rulemaking is intended to, again, clarify how, how to apply the broad strokes of the law.
You're welcome to come and join us if you have something to add. And I think what we'll do as well for the full council's benefit is, we'll print out the ordinance, I'm sorry, the initiative, we'll print out all the rules that have been created so far, we'll include the memo from Dan Eater, and we'll begin a little binder for the entire committee, council, I should say.
Invaders.
Yeah, absolutely. Welcome again.
Hello. Yeah. So only one piece of clarifying information is the initiative itself granted us rulemaking for the entirety of the ordinance, so not just those that we could enforce under wage theft.
What is the purpose of rulemaking about parts of the ordinance that you're neither administering nor enforcing? I just, I just have an idea of what rulemaking is about, and so I'm having a hard time understanding what the function of those rules would be in that instance.
Sure. And typically, what Dan mentioned before is, it provides clarity, of course, on what, how the agency will interpret the law. It also provides courts some guidance, although they do not have to take it, around other provisions of the ordinance as well. And to the extent that we are granted investigatory authority, we would clarify that as well, even though we weren't allowed enforcement, so.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
I see Dan taking notes, so thank you for following up with us on those pieces.
Let me ask you a question, quick question. When the courts were going through this and taking apart all seven parts, and we kind of touched on this, like, one of the fixes is, in Part 6, it states that the ordinance didn't define sexual assault or sexual harassment. I mean, that's an easy fix, right? So that would put us back with having the definition. I don't know why it wasn't put in there, but I'm guessing you can just, I don't know if you have a legal standard that you would pull from the Civil and Civil Code, what that definition would be. I'm guessing maybe not, but well, maybe, well, I shouldn't say that, I don't know. But my point is, that's a, that to me seems like an easy fix. Even though, Dan, thank you, Dan, for bringing up the sections, but like on Section 7, that is labeled miscellaneous, it does have the severability clause, but it also talks about that employees and protects employees, that they can't waive the issue about, in fact, an employee can't, an employer can't make an employee waive the issue about maintaining hotels, maintain a list of accused guests, that that's not waivable. I, you know, that to me makes sense, that that stands as so. So I guess, and this is a little bit of my frustration, but it would happen the first time, is I've just, I just felt like we didn't have the industry folks here to kind of guide us and answer some of these, some of the, just like some of the questions that Councilmember Bagshaw just raised. Just basic meat-and-potato questions, you know? How does an industry clean a room? How big is 5,000 feet? Do two people go in? Do one people go in? Just, just basic stuff, because as I was reading this and then reading the brief that the city filed to the Washington State Supreme Court, some of it is the text itself about the law, but just putting that aside, just real-world, how does it work in the industry? And how do we tailor a law like we did with scheduling? Remember, when we did the, what was it called?
Secure scheduling.
Thank you, thank you. Secure scheduling. You know, it was helpful for me when I met with Subway, and Target, and Ross, and Starbucks, as well as, as well as the people that we were, what the law was intended for. I didn't, I didn't feel that the first time around that we had those type of discussions, that we actually, I mean, that's for me, I don't know, I can't speak for everybody else. I was always concerned about that registry. I think that there should be something, but the way that that got drafted, I knew that that was going to get struck down. I had real concerns about anyone maintaining a registry in which somebody doesn't know they're on a list for five years with no due process, no standard of criminality, and I'm not saying that someone's guilty or innocent, but I had a real, I had a real issue with that, because that's something you could actually pull out, and the city attorney's office could work on, to have a special classification for workers in a hotel that it can be a misdemeanor. I mean, those are, I mean, I just think that there are a lot of issues that we could have done better, and this is why we get another opportunity to do it. So I'm looking forward to working with you folks on those issues.
So in part of our packet, we will also include the city's legal brief as well. Just want to reiterate, we are going to have a chance to go into the policy details and talk about each one of these elements a little bit more. And as we've done with Domestic Workers Standard or Domestic Workers Bill of Rights, for example, we'll be bringing in various voices.
Did you get the copy I gave you?
I did. Thank you very much. And we can also include that for folks as well in the little packet we're going to create. Did you have any specific comments in response to any of the rulemaking process or anything like that that you needed to add? Okay.
What do you think is, what are the next steps? What do you see, Councilmember Mascada?
Okay.
Yes. I just want to clarify, it's my understanding that the, the legal decisions that have been made thus far are not about the content, it's about the multiple subjects in the title. Is that correct?
That's exactly right.
Okay. I just, I think it's important to, whereas, you might be right about what might eventually be happening in court in the future, the courts have not taken a position on any of the elements. They're focused very much on the multiple subjects in the, in the title thus far.
No, no, listen, I have a clarification. That's true, but, but what they do talk about, which is important, is how certain subjects don't, how they don't complement each other, and how they don't further the intent of the law if they're not all working together, that they're disconnected. So whether, and I don't, it doesn't mean I agree or don't agree, but when it talks about this, this rational unity, how all seven of these parts are supposed to work together, so in that sense, they do touch upon the, the text, the substance of the law. My opinion has been, I, no, they did not say that there were due process issues with the registry. They bring that up, but it's clear from reading it, just as a seasoned lawyer, that's what they're getting at. That's my opinion. And that, I think that's, I've been a lawyer for 33 years, I have a little bit of sense of what's going on here, and as a former, and as a former judge and trial lawyer, so, and I'm just trying to offer that experience and wisdom that I don't want to get caught up in, well, they didn't go to each seven issues and say all of these were bad and go right into the substance, but it's pretty clear, and certainly the way the city responded in their brief, that they did, they are talking about them together in a way of that they are not in this rational unity piece. It isn't as sterile as, oh, you violated the single-subject rule, and that's all they stuck to, because it was 28, if that were the case, they could have written an opinion in three pages instead of 28.
So what you'll see from us, what you'll see from us is a full outline of the next meetings that we have scheduled to talk about this topic. We will include that full outline in a memo as a cover sheet to the materials that we're going to provide for folks. Dan, your memo will be at the top of that stack, because we really appreciate the overview you've provided today. Again, we're going to get a, get a chance to get briefed by the legal team so that we can ask some of these specific questions. And at our next meeting on April 4, we will have a chance to hear from some of the folks in the industry, I should say, who are working in the industry, and then we'll also have more stakeholders at the table on the May 13 date, and more in discussion on June 3. So you can expect, basically, like we did last year, for this to be a reoccurring theme so that we don't, we don't rush any conversations, that we really have a chance to understand both the legal analysis after talking to the legal team, and then have more conversation around policy. Today, again, was intended to be very high-level, just to do some level-setting.
Super. And there was one individual from the Nexus Host Hotel in your district that was here. I hope that we can have some of the hotel managers as well to talk to us, so we can ask some very direct questions of them. I think that'll, I, this is the point I think you were going at, Councilmember Juarez, we need to have everybody at the table so we can begin to look at solutions and not just make assumptions about what's going to work.
Yeah. I also want to acknowledge and thank the executive, the mayor's office is very interested in working with us on this, so I think it'll be a joint effort between council and the mayor. And just like we have with every opportunity, multiple chances for folks to weigh in and provide feedback, and looking forward to working with you to schedule the legal briefing.
Madam Chairman, I make a point, if you don't mind.
Cool.
Oh, Dan, I was going to ask you, when you come back to us with more information, like when I asked about when Motel 6 or whoever was asking people's immigration status and we responded, can you, when you go through that, and we can talk offline a little bit more, but when you go through those seven parts and addressing what Councilmember Herbl brought was a good point, and some of it is nuanced in those opinions, those other six parts where you can say, "We have done this before and it's been fine," or "We've done this other places and we've been good," that kind of thing? Not real detailed, but you know what I'm saying? So we have some kind of guidelines about where, where we have some room to, to say, "Okay, we're solid on this one, but how do we build on it that doesn't violate state law?" That would be real helpful.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you both very much. Thank you, Dan, for your...
Thank you, Dan.
...memo. And again, thanks for joining us, Councilmember Herbl. We'll get that information out to folks, work with the executives well on timing, and make sure that people have the full overview of when we hope to bring this discussion forward.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, and thanks, Councilmember Juarez, for your memo as well. So we do have one more item on our agenda, and thanks to our friends from Seattle City Light for sticking with us here. We are going to hear from Deborah Smith, Kate Engel, and Eric McConaughey, if you guys will join us at the table, and Erin, if you could read into the record item number 8.
Agenda item 8, Resolution 31872, a resolution approving the proposed budget framework of the SCADA Environmental Endowment Commission for its fiscal years 2019 through 2023 for briefing, discussion, and possible vote.
Welcome back. Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and have you introduce yourself for the record, and then we'll get started.
Good morning. I'm Eric McConaughey on the Council Central Staff.
And I'm Kate Engel, I'm the Science Policy Manager with Seattle City Light, and also the U.S. Secretary for the SCADA Environmental Endowment Commission.
Great.
And I'm Deborah Smith with Seattle City Light.
The leader.
In the microjacket. Thank you.
So we have a possible resolution for the committee's consideration today. Eric, do you want to get us kicked off here with an overview, or did you prefer Seattle City Light have some introductory comments?
I, of course, would prefer that City Light have introductory comments, because they're the experts, and they live and breathe this, so I think I will just go ahead and do that.
Okay, that sounds good. So Kate or Deborah, if you guys have any opening comments, why don't we do that before we get into the memo and the presentation?
Sure, I'm really just here for moral support and to advance the slides, so I know that
That is
Exactly. So I know that Kate will do an excellent job, so.
Okay, excellent. Kate?
Okay. Good morning. So as I mentioned to you, I'm, I have two hats on when I sit at this table today. I am the Science Policy Manager at Seattle City Light. I've been with Seattle City Light about three and a half years now, and I've been the U.S. Secretary for the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission for about six months. It's very, it's very interesting story behind the commission, we'll get into a little bit of that today to give you some sense of context. So as the U.S. Secretary, I might point out to you that my main role is to provide administrative support to the commission in doing their business. So my, my role is not to develop budgets or approve budgets, things like that, mine is to help support the work of the commission. So today, I'm pleased to present this budget framework to you that's been the hard work of the commission, and the framework is the allocation of their budget that they approved for the next five years just about three months ago.
Before we launch into the presentation, Eric, did you want to mention anything in your memo that you provided for us on March 18?
Yeah, I mean, the memorandum, I tried to do my best to give some history to how we come to be here today. Five years ago, the council did approve a similar measure for the budget, and at the time acknowledged that the budget's becoming from, you know, from the, from SEEK, I may say, say that, because I've heard City Light folks call the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission Seek. Is that appropriate?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. And, and in my rundown through that memorandum, I noted that this budget is consistent with budgets that have come to council before and consistent with the mission. So those are probably the highlights. It's a, it's a really fascinating topic. It goes back really deep into the history for City Light. It goes back to the City Light's work on creating the High Ross Dam on the Skagit River. Controversy that involved, pardon me, controversy that involved whether or not that dam should be taller, and what would they mean to the, to the lands that would be upstream of that dam. Activists in 1970, in a very famous incident, paddled the river, brought a lot of attention to it. I noted that date, because that's the year that I was born, so there you go. And so anyway, so this is just a, just by way of sort of touching on a few of the highlights in the memorandum, to say that the history is deep, the commission's been doing this for quite a while, the initial endowment by British Columbia and the city of Seattle to, to the budget for SEEK happened in the early 80s, it's been well managed since then. And most of the budget that you see here that is being, that's being used over the next five years comes out of the, the sort of proceeds from that endowment, with a small supplement each year from, from City Light as well as from B.C. Hydro.
You were born in 84?
No, no, I was born in 1970.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that 70 on here, I was like, what?
I'll take the 84, but no, I was 70.
You're not that young.
Yeah. Yeah, my sister and I, I've got a twin, 1970.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for sharing that.
All right, great, let's, we can go through the presentation. Thank you, Eric, for that overview as well.
So following up on what Eric said, I'm going to be presenting a little bit of historical context for this, which goes back to the construction of the Ross Dam back in 1937, how that leads into the High Ross Treaty and Agreement, a description of how that ties to the commission and to the Environmental Endowment Fund for which this budget framework that you're going to be looking at today is tied. So, next slide. So just to give you a bit of context on the landscape, the area that we're talking about is up on the B.C.-Washington state border. This area here is, falls under kind of the purview responsibility of the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission to ensure the environmental integrity of this area. What you see up there is this, I don't have a pointer, but you, okay, you see Diablo, and right above Diablo, you see an orange line there, right about there is where the Ross Dam currently sits, and above that is Ross Lake, which heading further on up into Canada is the main stem, Upper Skagit River. It's surrounded by parkland currently, and down on the U.S. side, it's also surrounded by a lot of parkland protected areas. Something that I might point out about this area, the Upper Skagit up in B.C. there is one of the prime areas for the threatened, federally threatened bull trout to spawn. It's got the highest density of rainbow trout and bull trout concentrated, spawning up there concentrated in the entire watershed. And regionally, it has the highest densities of bull trout spawning in British Columbia, Oregon, and Washington. And that's part of what makes this area very special and protected. There are also grizzly bears in here that are protected, as well as northern spotted owls and so on. I think that's it for that map. Okay, so historical context, so as I mentioned, this ties way back to the construction of the Ross Dam. It began construction in 1937, and in 1940, it was completed, and the height of the dam was at 1380 feet above sea level. The way the dam was designed, you can see on these pictures on the left here, there's some old pictures to give you a sense of how old this is, but also you can see on the bottom left, there's these brackets and lattice work going up the side of the dam here. I'm no dam construction expert, but I, what I can say about this is it was designed from the beginning to be stepped up in height over time. So in 1949, the dam was raised up to 1615 feet above sea level. And note that this was above the elevation of the river on the B.C. side, so there was some flooding of the Skagit River up into B.C. by about a half a mile. On the right there, that's just, you give a sense of the perimeter of Ross Reservoir, it's drawn down there, but you can see kind of the, the footprint of it.
I wonder why we didn't get the dates on that. They're not on there? Uh-uh. Oh, there are mine.
That's the, looks like the
There was
Version.
Yeah, there was an update to the, the slide deck, so I think that maybe it was part of it.
Let me hold on to that slide so I can write in the dates.
I can give you my copy if you'd like
Oh, no, it's okay. I can write it in.
I have a hard copy here.
I'm sorry about that, Councilmember.
Your fault. It's okay. Wait, 1930, City Light is, oh, it's different.
Yes, would you like, like this copy?
Yeah, it is different. Oh, yeah, it is completely different.
Welcome to have this copy.
Oh, okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Apologies for that.
That's all right, let me put this over here.
We'll make a note as well, if we get updated slides, we'll ping folks so that they have the email in their inbox.
Or PowerPoint. So then in 1970, City Light applied to raise the dam once again, but this time to 1725 feet above sea level. This would have flooded an additional 5,000 acres into British Columbia, and it raised a lot of alarm among particularly British Columbia government and environmental groups in Canada.
Tribes.
And tribes, yes. And so after years of controversy, we can flip to the next slide, in 1984, I'm skipping over a lot of interesting history there, to get to the point that in 1984, the High Ross Treaty between the U.S. and Canada came to be, and the agreement with, between Seattle City Light, between the city of Seattle and the B.C. government that's tied to that settled the controversy. As part of the agreement, there was an establishment of the Skagit Environmental Endowment Fund and the commission to administer this fund, and the purposes of this was to ensure the environmental integrity primarily of that area that I showed you in the map previously. So the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission, as I mentioned, it administers the endowment fund. It can, it's an international commission that consists of eight commissioners that are appointed by the mayor of Seattle and eight by the premier of British Columbia. Each commissioner serves a four-year term, and they're on, on a staggered basis. And I wanted you to know
Madam Chair? So the eight commissioners appointed by the mayor of Seattle, eight, who are the eight by the city of Seattle?
Let's see, we've got Jim Davis.
Well, how about this, why don't you just give me the names offline? Are there any tribal folk on that one?
Pardon me?
Are there any tribal people on that one?
No. This has been under discussion with the commission as a side point I might mention in the last meeting that I was at. It's a priority.
Okay, so can we get a list of the eight commissioners and what their terms are?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just by way of sort of footnote to that, on the, on the central staff memo, there's a link to the SEEK webpage, and there's some bios for each of the commissioners that are present there.
Oh, did you put that, you put that in your memo?
Not their bios, but just the link, it's, it's in the footnote, just, footnote about a footnote. And I'm really scoring points with you today, Councilmember, I can tell. I think maybe I'll just turn this
No, it's funny. Eric, what year were they all born?
I'm not, I'm not telling you.
Which districts do they live in?
Yeah, what district do they live in?
Well, the reason why I ask is because I'm going to get asked, so I would just like to know.
And also, it's really been important to you, and tribes have been involved in this, but not recognized, so I think that it's something that we all can be mindful of and move toward.
Yeah, tribes, we get tired of suing the city and the county and the state and everybody else and their brother, so sometimes I just like to know who makes the decisions, so, anyway.
Brought out here for us.
Thank you, council. Thank you, chairwoman.
So another point that I might bring up about the commission that is that it does not manage land directly, but it works through cooperating agencies, government land management agencies on both sides of the border. Next slide. So the endowment fund, it's got several main purposes that are listed here. It's all oriented around conservation and protection of the, of that area that I mentioned in the Upper Skagit, as well as education and supporting recreational purposes. It's to conserve and protect wilderness and wildlife habitat, enhance recreational opportunities, acquire mineral and timber rights consistent with the conservation and recreational purposes, conduct studies of need and feasibility, and to plan for and construct hiking trails, footbridges, interpretive displays, et cetera. Okay. So the commission organized the budget into four main program-specific areas, and historically it's been organized this way. There's watershed, projects have fallen to in watershed integrity, education, recreation, and ecosystem science. And then they have cross-program goals that aren't tied to a specific progress, project, but are interests of the commission to try to integrate indigenous engagement in all projects that they're working on, and to work towards getting more diversity and addressing climate change as well, which is recently added. So next. And here are a list of the partners, what they call partners, that the commission works with. The partners are basically the organizations that the commission provides funding to, and you see a list of them there. There's a combination of U.S. partners and Canada partners with, primarily with the government and with nonprofit organizations that they work with. So before you, you have the five-year budget allocation that the commission developed over a laborious strategic planning process this year. I might mention that the commission meets several times a year to administer this fund by reviewing project proposals, monitoring contracts, and addressing environmental issues in the Upper Skagit. Another point is that this fund is managed separately from the city budget, it's not, not the city budget. The commission's budget framework was approved, but even though it's not the city budget, the budget needs to be approved by the province of British Columbia as well as the Seattle City Council. As such, the budget framework has been presented to city council each time it's been revised in the past. It used to occur annually for council until 2014, and then it was extended to a five-year process to kind of decrease the labor intensity of doing it every year. So this is the second time we're seeking approval for the budget framework for a five-year budget.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? So you have them all listed where the money goes? So what, you have over a million, a little over a million for education? What does that mean? What does that look like, education?
Education funding is typically, and this again is historically how they've done it, that I've been getting familiarized with in my role, but there's funding that goes to like the Student Conservation Association, North Cascades Institute, and the like to support their programs. They also support development of interpretive displays, things like that.
I think we talked about this last year when you were here, about how, how this ties in with climate change and the efforts that we're, we're trying to make statewide. Can you dive into that a little bit?
So the commission has a, one of its, one of its cross-program goals that I mentioned is to address climate change. So they've been doing some water quality monitoring, water quality including temperature monitoring in the reservoirs. They've also been paying attention to the sedimentation that's going into the area from surrounding areas. I think those are probably the two primary things I can think of off the top of my head that they currently fund that address that.
All right, thank you.
Let's see, where was I? Okay. Any other key points here? So this distribution of funds, I might point out, closely matches the, the percentage distribution that they've had in the past. They tend to do their business in a way that kind of, kind of follows a pattern of what they've done in the past, that they modify each year, and it's worked for them. But the commission also maintains the flexibility to adjust the distribution of these funds throughout the life of the strategic plan. So the dollar amounts you see there, by, by the end of the process, will likely shift around at the end of five years, how it's been spent, based on perhaps lack of performance by a project partner, their ability to come up with matching funds, or government shutdown alike that could interfere with their ability to execute the work. Also, there's opportunity funds available in here for items that the commission hadn't anticipated that meet the, meet the commission's needs, that they want to have an opportunity to go after. The Watershed Integrity Contingency Fund of a million dollars at the end there is particularly notable. That's a large contingency that they set aside for big items like mineral rights acquisition opportunities, for example. If, if they get the opportunity to do that, they have money set aside to do that.
Can I ask a question? So on the last one, how often, I'm guessing if we're re, looking at voting to reestablish this five-year budget framework approval, or to approve it, what in the past has the Watershed Integrity Contingency, and has it been used?
I haven't, I can't answer that question off the top of my head, whether they've actually used that watershed contingency fund. Having been recently picked up this role with the commission, I can't speak to that, but I can find out.
Okay, so this is just my concern, besides not knowing where educational and some of it goes, but I just don't want to rubber stamp something where you're just rolling over a million dollars every five years and I don't know where it's going, and we have to approve this, and I don't have a lot of information, because we have to prove this through council, especially in light of what Councilmember Bagshaw just raised, with issues that we get addressed about climate change and all the bills that are pending interalimpy and the stuff that we're trying to deal with with the budget. I just heard an interesting term this morning on, on NPR about water poverty. So those are the kind of things I'm thinking about. So when I see you, this list, I mean, that's fine, but it doesn't tell me, it doesn't tell me where everything's going. And when we look at budgets and when we allocate and we approve, usually we have something that tells us where it's going. Every time I see a contingency fund, I always ask, well, when's the last time you used it? And so is it always a million dollars, or do you just roll it over? It would be helpful to know that, that information. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just trying to say, as, as a person that has to vote on this, a little bit more information would be helpful.
How they spend the money, I might point out, so, so the commission is responsible for allocating the budget, and that they ensure that the budget, it's an international commission, so they, they gather together at least quarterly to develop plans for how they're going to spend the money. So the money is allocated in this general way at the beginning of the strategic planning process, but then they receive proposals and work with partners to use these funds in the manner that's laid out here to support the work of the commission. So you won't get specific projects at this date that tie to these amounts of money.
I think, I think, I think what Councilmember Warris is asking, and I think we could probably get this, and, and, you know, I think, who had your role before, because you've only been in this
Scott Powell.
Yeah, so there's a change, which, you know, Kate's only been in this role for six months. So, but I do think we could probably go back and say, if those allocations are consistent with what's been in the past, did the million dollars or thereabout from the last five-year cycle, how was, how were those monies used? I think that's really what you're asking.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, I was going to say Chairwoman Smith, only because if, even if it's just a pie chart, even if it's just a pie chart
Only because if, even if it's just a pie chart, even if it's just a pie chart, I mean, I just, I don't know how, that's just helpful. And, you know, knowing who the board members are, knowing who's making the decisions, and then how that aligns with how we are handling environmental and these watershed issues at this table.
Yeah, I think the outcomes are what you're looking for, too, in the last five years.
Yeah, I don't know, because it doesn't tell me. It just says, we're going to, we need $4 million, and we want you to approve it, and this is what we've been doing. I have no backstory or narrative in which to say, oh, you spent this money in education, and here's a pie chart where, you know, 40% went to, you know, climate change. Or, I mean, I don't know. So that's my point.
So do you think we could get like, or put together a pie chart from the five years ago? I mean, it may not be fully complete, but that kind of shows, okay, based on the amount of the 2014 budget, how have those funds been spent roughly?
Yes, we can. There should have been an annual report that, I'm not sure who ends up receiving the annual report. Did Council receive that annual report that describes what the budget was spent on the past year?
Well, I'll tell you right now, we won't read the annual report. But I will look at a pie chart.
Yeah, so we'll get you a pie chart, together with a list of the, the list of the mayor appointees from the U.S. side to the SEAC. And was there a third item? I think the pie chart will kind of talk about outcomes, because if it's in these same kind of buckets, then those unallocated funds should show in some more descriptive way.
Yeah, I think where Councilmember Juarez is going is right, is we really want to, love the history, that's great, but if we're spending this money, what's getting improved?
Right. And also, we don't, there are seven projects, or seven funding projects. I don't know if there used to be six, or eight, or 10, or what it used to be, or if this is an expansion, or did you add more? I don't know any of that. Isn't it seven?
These are, these are program areas that they've had historically, and...
And if they're program areas that they've had historically, maybe there's some other issues that we would like to see addressed, or a new, as you said, bucket, or something, instead of, oh, we've been using these seven subjects for the last 18 years.
Can I confirm also? So the amount of money that we're talking about here, these are not city dollars.
That's correct.
Okay, great. But we do have jurisdiction over approving the budget.
Yeah, the treaty provided that BC and the City Council would review and approve these budgets.
Okay. And I think Councilmember Juarez's point is well taken. I would also like to see the annual report, even though we might not read the whole thing. The pie chart, I think would be a nice comparison to the item that you have on number five, so we can do kind of a apples-to-apples. And then we're coming, my staff's coming right now with the appointee list, so we should be able to see that. Just a question on timing for you. If we don't take action today, is there time, if we had two more weeks to take a look at this, if we put this on the agenda for vote on April 4th, our next committee meeting? How would that timing work out for you?
The end of the fiscal year for the Commission is the end of this month, so we'd need approval by the end of the month for the partners to begin the work that they need to start with their fiscal year on April 1st.
So you know what, what might be helpful for Kate to just share some information about how this budget is funded by the partners under the treaty? Can you do that?
Yes. So under the treaty, this isn't a decision that we make every year. This is something that was established in 1984. The U.S. side, Seale Light contributes money into the Endowment Fund. This past year, it's about $130,000, I believe, and there's a formula associated with that that I would need someone to come up here and explain. We just walked through it. And the BC side also contributes to the fund. There's about $11 million in the fund, between $10 and $11 million in this fund. It's kept in a bank in Canada, and the principal is not tapped into for expenditures towards supporting the work of the Commission. It comes off of the interest gained. The fund has done very well, has been managed well by the bank, and we're, I think we're running about 6% interest rate right now on that fund. So this is all interest from that Endowment Fund that was established in 1984, and that BC and Seattle contributes to, as I described, each year.
Can I ask a question? Just hypothetically, I'm not trying to scare you. What if we voted no?
We haven't seen that happen since the time this started, so I can't explain about the details of what the implications would be to the Commission's work if Seattle stepped out and said no. They would not approve the budget allocation that the Commission had decided upon.
You know, I don't know, and I think probably what we need to take a look at is, some of the questions you've asked may be covered in the agreement itself, in the treaty. So, you know, in terms of the discretion that the approving bodies have over how funds are distributed or used, as well as kind of what happens if the budget isn't approved by March 31, I'm guessing that those are probably the items that are covered in the treaty. So I think, Eric, we probably need to go back and take a look at that, and we can also provide that information. Because I'm just not sure, so the funding that we're actually, from a City Light perspective, which you already approved via the City Light budget process, was this $135,000. So it's not, and well, and you would have approved a two-year budget, so you would have approved the two-year version of that. So it's not a significant amount of funds. So this is, it is not, I don't believe it's intended by any means to be a rubber stamping exercise, but it's not a funding decision that you're making today, because the funding happens separately, and it's by this existing longstanding agreement.
So why do you need our approval, then?
It's part of the treaty process. We were talking about it on the way over here, and I was sharing that when I worked at EWEB, there was a weird thing like that that had to do with Trojan nuclear plant, and every year the Council had to approve a budget, and yet there were no fiscal impacts for the utility. And it was always, you know, it was somehow, you know, a relic. But I think it's worth digging into and understanding what, you know, what is the authority that we have to help direct funds, particularly as things change? I'm guessing that, and I'm just making this up, but I'm guessing that the authority is in the appointment of the eight people, not in the particulars. So those eight folks that are appointed by the mayor, and I assume come through this body, I don't know if there's a confirmation. Okay, so the eight people that are appointed by the mayor are setting the funding priorities for the SEAC, together with their BC counterparts. And so that's, that would be my assumption.
Can I have two follow-up questions? So, and I can't remember the title, but it's kind of the same, we had the same issue come up, and I want to say it's the Clean Air Commission, something, something, that the mayor sits on or has an appointee that makes decisions when we were looking at the natural gas plant in Tacoma on the tide flats. And that came up about, well, who's on the commission? Well, who represents the City of Seattle? Well, who's making the decisions about putting the plant there? Who's on the board that makes these decisions? Where do we get that money? Who decides that? So we found all that stuff out, and I think I'm kind of going down the same rabbit hole here. But the other issue is, I'm guessing there are other cities and municipalities that are parties and signatories to this treaty, and which they would have to be seeking the same municipal approval. No?
I don't believe so. The thing that's really interesting about this treaty is that it's pinned on this idea of the High Ross Dam not going higher. So this, I think way back when in the negotiating, the City of Seattle, you know, City Light said, well, we need this power, you know, if we don't raise the dam, how are we going to get there? Forgive me for, I don't mean to sound flippant about any of this, I'm sure this was a ton of work, right? And so the idea was that, okay, well, BC Hydro can provide that power, we'll have it at a very sort of appropriate rate that will be consistent through time. And then a percentage of that power that City Light will purchase from BC Hydro, that percentage, in no more than a certain amount per year, will be, some of that will be set aside. That's that $130,000 we talked about, there's a little bit of money that's supplemented each year. So I think the thing that sticks this whole thing together are the sort of parties that are involved, which is BC Hydro, which is a crown corporation that is answerable to British Columbia, and the City of Seattle, because City Light's a part of the City of Seattle. So those are the parties that are approving this budget, because they're, they've got a stake in this thing. And then I think the Commission is set up, just to finish this thought, and please correct me if I'm being too general, the Commission and the fund is set up to say, well, this was all about the environment, right? You didn't raise the dam to preserve the environment, so we ought to have some say in that budget, and we ought to have some say in appointing those folks.
Okay. Thank you. I might point out, the treaty is between the U.S. and Canada, it was signed by the President of the United States. The agreement is tied to the treaty, it is a piece of the treaty, and it is signed by the City of Seattle and the Premier of British Columbia.
Well, let me just stop you there. I get that.
Not other cities, I was just following.
Okay, got that. And I know what a treaty is, being a Native American and representing tribes for 30 years, I get that. What I'm getting then is, I guess I'm feeling like, why are we bothering if it doesn't matter? If they're going to do it anyway? I don't know what a deadline is for, because they're going to do it anyway. But that might not be...
It's required by the treaty, that the budget framework be approved by the BC government and by the Seattle City Council.
Right. And I'm saying, what I'm saying back is that there are no consequences, I don't care what the treaty says, there are no consequences if we don't. That's my point. Right? Nothing's going to happen.
The treaty's silent, well, the agreement's silent on that piece. If someone doesn't approve, what happens? So that's why I can't answer that question.
I think the most appropriate thing for me here to do is just take responsibility for not having anticipated that question, Councilmember. And so let's, let me dig into that, I'll work with City Light, and we will find a way to answer that question. My guess is that, it hasn't happened yet, and probably the response of the Commission, if this Council said, we don't have enough information, we don't like it, or whatever, is that they would have to roll up their sleeves and take another crack at it. I think, practically speaking, I don't think they would forge ahead, but because it hasn't happened, we don't have the history there. So we could look at the agreement itself and see what it says. Can they do anything? Is this really, is this, did the treaty, the agreement build in kind of just a formal step, or is there something more meaningful there? And we can also answer some of the other questions that you brought up. And for everybody here, I am sorry that I didn't anticipate those things to help propel this conversation forward.
It's okay.
I just want to underscore, I think Councilmember Juarez's points are really well-taken. You know, for example, we know that it's part of our process here, as the committee that has oversight over Seattle City Light to look at your strategic plan and your spending plan for five years, but we also know that we have the opportunity to ask questions, add things to that, you know, provide our input and ideally, direction if there's something that we see that looks like it might be missing an element. I get that we're not the full purse string holders on this, but given that we do have some element of oversight, it appears, it would be helpful to have a better understanding of what responsibilities this body does have in the future. I actually don't remember getting briefed on this last year, and I was asking my...
It was five years ago.
We only get briefed, but we don't have an annual briefing on this. Okay.
You get, you are to be receiving an annual report every year from the Commission that are produced by the Commission.
And I'm hearing that, in an ongoing way, you probably would like to have a briefing on that, on that report, but we can type that up later.
Okay, that sounds good. I do want to provide for the committee, the, at least the photos that were provided on the link that you provided, and I can, I guess where we're going to see a glaring gap in the terms of, in the type of representation that we would desire to see on such a board. I do think, first of all, we should note that there appears to be at least one commissioner that is vacant on the U.S. side.
Both sides.
Yes, on both sides. And, well, I was going to say two. Oh, this one just has a missing picture, so one missing on the Canadian side as well. I think to Councilmember Juarez's point, what we don't see is specifically Native American representation, we don't see communities of color well represented. It looks like, at least on the Canadian side, we see at least a few more women, actually equal balance between women and men, gender balance. But I think that this is something that, now that it's been put on our radar, we're going to definitely want to know more about the expiration of the terms, the requirements for these positions, and potentially, I would suggest working with the mayor's office on this final appointment spot.
Yeah, I want to be on there.
I would love for you to be on there.
We don't even know where they're from.
So what does the committee desire here? I understand that your fiscal year ends on 4-1. However, I'm wondering if there's a huge difference between a 4-1 and a 4-4 date to dive into the next year's activities? If there isn't a three-day crisis that is created by us waiting, I'm wondering what the committee desires in terms of...
Well, here's what I'm thinking. I want the answers to all these questions, but I think that even when we have those answers to the questions, we're going to move forward with this. And maybe what we could do just to make sure that Seattle City Light can move forward with this, that we can move the resolution forward, but with the understanding that we're going to have a want to report back. Eric, you're involved in that. Would that make sense? Because rather than bringing this up and going through all the elements again next time, it's a resolution, we're not, it's not an ordinance, we're not, as you said, we're not budgeting additional funds, that I would just suggest that we move forward with this today. And we got a lot of questions that we've made clear, and we'll come back.
I agree.
But is that all right with you?
I'm comfortable with that, if my committee colleagues are, and I'm sure that that would make your life easier in the next 10 days here as well.
I wouldn't violate international law.
I was actually thinking about the Columbia River Treaty that we've been trying to reopen with Canada on the power side, and I'm like, oh, no, not another one. Anyway.
We appreciate your indulgence and your response to our questions, and look forward to getting more information from you. And I think we'll be following up with the executive as well about the final appointment and then the expiring terms, but any additional information you have would be great. With your approval, then, I move the committee recommends passage of Resolution 31872 on the 2019-2023 budget for the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission, selling an easement to Snohomish County. Is that, that is not part of this?
Just 2023, 2019 through 2023.
2023.
Good, second.
Yeah, Skagit Environmental Council Endowment. I don't think we want to sell any sidewalks to Skagit, to Snohomish County.
I think you have something to sneak in maybe from yourself.
Let me, let me just say that again for the record, so that there's not any confusion. I move the committee recommends passage of Resolution 31872 on the 2019-2023 budget for the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission, period. Are there any further comments? Those in favor recommending passage of 31872, vote aye. Raise your hand. No opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you so much. We're going to move this motion forward to the full council on March 25 at 2:00 p.m. Appreciate all your answers to your questions.
Thank you.
Any last comments for the good of the order? I got one.
Watch out.
Okay, just want to flag for folks, our amazing Seattle Channel viewing audience, today we have the Housing Development Anti-Displacement Strategies Discussion. I like to call this MHA Now What? So MHA passed, we're celebrating this week still. It passed on Monday, here we are on Thursday, we're not skipping a beat, we're saying that was the tip of the iceberg, now what do we do? We want more community-oriented development, we want more childcare centers and senior centers and community cultural centers, and we want open spaces, and we also want this to be done through the community lens. That's been really critical for the Equitable Development Initiative efforts. We want to braid the funding from EDI with Office of Housing funding, so we can create more mixed-use centers. And we also want to make sure that we're creating affordable housing and not displacing folks. So it's a large conversation, a larger conversation about the right ingredients, I keep saying, the right ingredients to the cake that we're trying to bake here. MHA was just one of those. Tenant protections is just one. Ensuring that people have a place to go back to if development is occurring is just one element. We're going to also be talking about community-oriented development and getting additional funding to the hands of organizations who are really focused on creating affordable housing and housing those who might be at risk of displacement, not only in this conversation, but in the future conversations through the A&amp;F Plan coming up this year, and our disposition implementation strategies to building off of last year's effort. So it's a lunch and learn, I will have bagels and cream cheese and coffee, I know that sounds like a breakfast lunch and learn, but let's consider it brunch and learn. We will have our next meeting on April 4th, as I mentioned. We will again have folks talking again about the Initiative 124. This is today. This is today at noon, yes, so in 40 minutes, if folks can come. And, I'm sorry, and the next meeting will be on April 4th, and we will again talk about 124. By that time, we should have a little binder for you all about what the expected timeline is, and for our council colleagues as well. Thanks again to Councilmember Herbold for joining us, and Councilmember Gonzalez for her interest in this and working with our office on timelines and next steps. So we expect to have a full committee. Yes. Without that, committee is adjourned. Thank you so much, Erin House, for cheering us.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye-bye.